All right, I guess we're good to go. All right, Lisa, roll call.
Adam.
Here.
Gannaway.
Here.
Gibson. Kapler.
Here.
Armsby. Stoltenberg.
Here.
Wenland.
Here.
All right, great. Do I have any motion on the minutes from last month?
I'd make a motion. This is Roy Wenland.
Sounded like Roy and Joe.
All right, yeah. Motion by Roy to approve the minutes from November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
We got a second by Joe.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Great. All right, well, welcome to the Planning and Zone Commission meeting of January nineteenth.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, we just had another entry, I want to make sure it's not a commissioner.
Okay.
Could phone number two zero, excuse me, three two zero nine one three eight, please identify yourself?
Hi, it's Lynn Gibson.
Thank you, Lynn.
Okay, great.
You bet.
All right, so again, Planning and Zone Commission meeting of January nineteenth. We are seven member commission appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. We're a recommending body. The one person that's in the audience, if at any time you'd wish to speak, please go up to the podium. Big audience today, okay, with that, I think we'll just get right into it, so next item on the list is review and approval of the two thousand twenty-one Planning and Zoning Commission Annual Report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, you can go to the next slide. So you have this in your packet, there's also a slide that kind of just steals a couple images from the packet, if you will, or one image from the packet. And you'll just see that our five-year average, if you look at the cases in twenty twenty-one, we're pretty much on average, and then the table data is there for you. So all those categories, with the exception of that first one, that rezoning one, we're pretty much right on our average. The rezoning one is less than average, but that's probably because twenty seventeen was a new, I'm guessing here, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, that was a new zoning ordinance, so that probably led to a lot of rezonings, which is why those two years were high. So you could kind of count those as outliers. What this means for the future, I don't know, I would expect another busy year. If it were up to me, that would be something I would think we were going to have, even though some prices are high in the marketplace and inflation's going up, we still see a lot of activity around town, so I think, you know, we'll be seeing a lot of each other. And I do have another slide. Just a little more on the background, this isn't in the report specifically, but just, you know, some background on the department and on what we do. We include the Building Division and Code Enforcement Divisions and the Planning Division. And you see on your screen there over five thousand five hundred building permits, seven thousand seven hundred building inspections, nine hundred fifty-one code enforcement cases, four hundred rental unit inspections, and that was really our first year doing that, we're going to double that next year. And then we attended one building board of appeals. We wrote sixty-six P and Z cases and twenty-six Board of Adjustment case reports. If you are an auditor or of the accounting mindset, you're probably going, hey, those numbers don't match up to the slide before. Sometimes we write staff reports and they don't get presented because the cases get withdrawn or something happens, so there's probably more there than is on the previous slide. And as you can recall, many of these were pretty high profiles, we spent a lot of time in this room, some large crowds, much larger than tonight. Spending a lot of time, you know, doing some good work for the citizens of Betendorf. That is all I have on the annual report.
Okay, thank you. Any comments?
This is Ann Gannaway, I just have a question.
Sure.
Can you tell a little bit more about what the changes are for the rental units being inspected? And you mentioned that's going to double next year, what's, what all that's about?
Yeah, I'd be glad to, so when I came on board with the city, they were transitioning the rental inspection program from, I believe, the fire department to code enforcement. And with COVID and just the learning curve, getting our staff trained, we were able to do about four hundred units last year, and that's really not a number that's high enough to keep up with the number of rental units in town. They have to be inspected every four years, so every unit in town, we have roughly four thousand, have to be inspected every four years. Even my, you know, dumb math gets me to about a thousand a year to get a quarter of four thousand units inspected. But now that we're trained and we're hopefully through COVID, knock on wood, we can, we can get to that thousand units mark and start getting caught up on those.
That's great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? I'll just make one comment, nice work from the city staff. It's a busy year, and let's hope it is another busy year.
Thank you.
Right. Can I get a motion?
Scott, you're just looking for a motion to receive the report?
Yes.
Report is presented.
Yeah. Joe?
Yeah. Second, Roy Wenland.
Okay. Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? We're good. All right, do we want to tackle election of officers tonight, or wait till we have more bodies actually in the room? I'll take a motion either way.
Is there a procedural issue that has to happen at a certain time, Scott, or can we push that down the road a little bit?
I momentarily saw Chris shaking his head, but let's let him talk here.
I think it's up to, it's really up to the commission. If you don't do it tonight, it will just remain as it is until the next meeting. But certainly, there's no, nothing stopping you from doing it tonight, so it's really, it's the commission's desire.
Well, if everyone's okay with it, I'll just nominate Roy again if he's willing to do it.
I'll second that, how's that, Scott?
That sounds good, then we just get it off the table.
Roy would be willing to do it, thank you.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Great. All right, I kind of already reviewed the commission procedure, so we'll move on. And I believe Taylor, you're going to take this one?
Yep.
Rezoning case?
Might be a good idea why he's presenting, Mr. Chairman, if we ask the people in the audience to mute their microphones.
Okay, yes, if you can mute your mics, that would be great. Give it a shot.
Commissioner Stoltenberg, we have one case for the commission tonight. This is a final plat, an extraterritorial review, a final plat of the Joe Smith First Edition. This is located on Forest Grove or one hundred ninety-fifth Avenue, as it is addressed in the county. This is a subdivision of, this will create, currently there's two lots with a total of three dwellings on it. This plat will create three separate lots for, with each dwelling located on each lot. Let me go down to a aerial map. Here you are, this is located across from Stony Creek North, Third Edition, off of one hundred ninety-fifth slash Forest Grove. You can see one dwelling here, and it's located on a substandard lot in the county, and it'd be, it would be non-conforming currently, but the existence of the house is grandfathered in. And then here are the two other dwellings located on the other lot, Lot Two, currently. They are historically, I believe, were old sharecropper houses, they go way back, like a hundred years. So this plat will allow the owner to sell or transfer those dwellings with a lot before them. Here is the proposed subdivision. Lot one would remain the single-family home, eighteen thousand square feet, which is, this is at the counties, from the county subdivision ordinance would be substandard, but is grandfathered in, and then it would create two thirty thousand square foot lots, which is the minimum lot size in the county. If this were, this is not in our annexation plan, but if it were to be annexed, they would be likely, they'd be conforming in our A two rural residential district. They are currently accessed by one hundred ninety-fifth, so there's no added infrastructure to this final plat or subdivision. They do have septic systems. The Scott County Health Department reviewed the subdivision and had no concerns, I believe there is a, they're all located in the rear of the lots. And here's the actual final plat. We had no additional comment, we included, we did want there to be a utility easement included in the fifteen-foot utility easement included to the front of the property adjacent to the road. And there was no other comment by our departments. As I mentioned, this is considered, this is in our extraterritorial review area, we divide it between Leclerc, the Pleasant Valley, between Leclerc and us, so this is in our area, so it becomes, comes before us and needs approval, recommendation by this commission, then approval by council to become law. No stormwater retention or anything else was needed because these, as I mentioned, these are existing dwellings on this land, so this is purely just subdividing the land for what is existing today. Staff would recommend approval, but no other conditions. I can take any questions.
Thank you, I have one question, this is kind of again outside of our jurisdiction to an extent, but access to one hundred ninety-fifth? My recollection, and I didn't take a drive out there on this one because I rode a bicycle by there quite a bit, great visibility there, so that's not necessarily an issue, but do we have any regulations on the books, any issues with the access on the one ninety-fifth from single lots?
Currently, they're accessed, as you can see, there is one cutout, I believe it's a shared, this is not an updated photo. That driveway has been improved, so the northwest lot, which is Lot One shown on the final plat, and then there's two additional access points. If we were to, if it was come to our territory, it would be as-is. So I'm not sure if we would recommend changing that, but we'd be annexing it, so I have no, I can't comment on, I guess, what we require.
I don't think we would have a way to remove the access as it already exists, so to use maybe an overused term, they're essentially grandfathered in. And to some degree, this is really a county issue. In particular, not ours, because they have jurisdiction over the road and that, those curb cuts.
We do have a limit on the number of lots that can use a shared driveway and the number of lots that can use one access point, but that would be for the subdivision and creation of new undeveloped lots, so this is a little different because these are developed already. Pretty rare, I'd say, that there's two development rights and two dwellings on one lot, so it's kind of fixing an error in a way. But, yeah, that wouldn't come to play unless, I guess, if they were to demolish one of those two, that could come into play.
One more question, just curiosity, is it the county that made the decision that either Betendorf or PV needs, or Leclerc, excuse me, needs to approve this? Who makes that decision?
Under Iowa law, within two miles of the city limits would be the extraterritorial review. We do have a resolution that both Betendorf and Leclerc passed many years ago, that sort of set forth the the line of, kind of clarified that two-mile line for each city.
Okay.
And it really does relate to future annexation, I mean, that's kind of the point of the extraterritorial review. As Taylor said, while this is within our two-mile review zone, this area is really, it's not in our annexation plan presently because of the fall of the, of the ground, the sanitary sewer issues would be very difficult there, so our annexation plan is really to go north as opposed to east at this point, so I don't want to say that it's academic, but this is primarily a county issue.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I will note too, the current land use in the county, which relates somewhat, that's currently residential, the lots and across, and to the south is all a single-family residential. The surrounding area of the lots is all agricultural, it's zoned in the county, they call it agricultural general, which is basically their holding zone for future development. And on their future land use, it has all been designated future residential. So that would all still be totally in the county, and as Chris mentioned, it's very, it's very far east of our border, Chriswell would be the nearest as our border, so it would take quite a bit, there's no adjacent property or anything in the city.
Okay. Any additional comments? Questions? Hearing nothing, does anyone have a motion?
I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve case or the final plat request for twenty-one dash zero seven five, the Joe Smith First Edition.
I can second.
Before we vote, I need to let the one person in the audience have a chance to speak if he'd like to. Nope, he's good, all right, so we have a first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Same, same sign for those opposed? Motion carries. All right, now on to number eight, the ordinance amendment.
Yeah, thank you, Taylor, would you throw the PowerPoint back up, please? Perfect, thank you so much. Case number twenty-one zero nine eight, the petitioners, the city of Betendorf. This follows on the heels of the November moratorium on fireworks retailers in our downtown master plan overlay district. This relates to the actual ordinance change, as that moratorium will be coming to an end here shortly. I would remind you that it proposes in the downtown master plan overlay district, a permanent prohibition on retail buildings that sell fireworks, and the way we define those buildings are by fifty percent floor space dedicated to fireworks, or fifty percent of the annual retail sales from fireworks. That November sixteenth date was the date that we published the, or passed the moratorium. To keep things going and get this, get this ordinance enacted, we would have to receive your approval today to meet the deadline of the moratorium expiring. Just a little more background, in twenty sixteen, the staff published the downtown master plan update, update and streetscapes plan. That included some specific language that was then folded into the twenty seventeen ordinance, which included the downtown master plan and streetscapes plan, a section, that is a section of our zoning ordinance, so that section of the zoning ordinance included all the prohibitions that exist now, but did not include the fireworks prohibition, we would be adding that. One of the things that was made very clear in both the plan and the ordinance is that the intent of the downtown area, master plan area, is a physically attractive pattern of development, and to protect this area from negative impacts of incompatible development, while preserving and expanding the tax base of the city. Staff would note that you are only allowed to sell fireworks from a retail location between June one and July eighth, and between December tenth and January third of each year. That's an intermittent business, and the intermittent business, we would find inconsistent with the noted plans and the zoning ordinance. Additionally, we'd point out that the older structures, their setbacks, both side, front and rear, are smaller than new buildings in current code. They also don't have the same fire protection systems built into them, and because of that, they may be more at risk for, for fire. And so storing flammables in these buildings could be a problem. For these reasons, we'd recommend you pass or approve this ordinance to city council. On the screen is the map of the overlay district, so this is the geography that this ordinance change would impact. It would only be that, I'm going to call it purple, maybe magenta, area that is defined in our zoning ordinance. It would not include any other part of town, so other retailers elsewhere would be able to, to open up shop. I could answer any questions if you have them.
Good, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, this is Roy, I've got one question, and I raised it, I may have raised it clear enough in the last discussion on it, but I just want to make sure, from my perspective, I'm clear on how that fifty percent works, so picture, if you will, a building, a retail building that's divided, for ease of discussion, it's, it's it's a thousand square feet, and six thousand square feet of the building is some other user, and four thousand of the square feet of the building is the fireworks user, but one hundred percent of that forty percent is fireworks. Is the fifty percent number that we're talking about fifty percent of a thousand square feet? Or the fifty percent of a subdivided portion of a larger building that comprises that particular premises?
That's a really good question, I would, I would posit that we would base it off the business license, and the license would give us an address and a location for that business, and we would take that specific area into, into the, into the math, into the division, to your point. So if you had a strip mall, it would be the address of the unit that the business is licensed to that would potentially want to sell fireworks that we would be looking at, not the entire strip mall.
Good, I didn't want to get tripped up on a technicality, just in somebody like, oh, well, it's, it's not more than fifty percent of the retail premises if it was considered bigger, but if that's your process, I think that would address it, thanks, Mark.
I would just concur with that, this is Chris, I think it's a great question, we had a good discussion at our last meeting on this. The, this particular language came from the administrative rules that the fire, the state fire marshal put into place, and it relates to the retailer's retail floor space, so it's, we look at it as the individual business that is selling the fireworks, so it, same answer, just a little clarification of where that
Okay.
language came from.
Great, appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, can I get a motion?
I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve case twenty-one dash zero nine eight, the ordinance amendment for Section eleven dash six dash three, Sub G, Sub Seven of the City Code.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'm second. This is Ann, I'll third.
All right, I think Ann squeezed in there just barely. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries. Number nine, review of RFP for upcoming comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance revisions.
Yeah, and if it pleases the commission, I could probably take nine and ten together because they really are the same thing.
Sure.
Commission update, and, and in fact, that's how I titled my slide, so if you don't mind, indulge me just for a few minutes here, I wanted to talk to you again about what we've been working on as staff to update our zoning ordinance. Back in October of twenty, we had a workshop where we talked about our zoning ordinance, and we talked about some possible changes to, a lot of those relating to multifamily and density. Since then, we've had some census numbers come out, and those census numbers have really shown a lot of growth in Betendorf. That makes us think we want to take a look at our comprehensive plan and maybe do an update. So I've got a timeline under this slide to have a commission update, and those of you at home, I think you have this as well. Where we want to do now is, we want to implement some changes to the zoning ordinance, what we call a cleanup, some, some terms and definitions and actually layout and functionality of the ordinance could be improved, and we're also going to mix in some minor changes to multifamily density. But maybe not as significant as we had talked about at our workshop, and that's due in part to some, I think, changes and thoughts at both staff level and at the council level, given the amount of development we've seen, the amount of multifamily development we've seen, and also the continuing pandemic, and we don't want to, we don't want to change too much, kind of before we've done some evaluation, done a new plan. So we're looking at having to, what I'm going to call version one point O of the zoning ordinance, a cleanup version in February, March of twenty twenty-two for you to look at. I need to take some time to share that with the home builders, although for the most part, I think they'll appreciate it because it just clears some ambiguity out of it. We also want to do what's called a staff review of our current comp plan, where we go through, we take inventory of what we've done, what areas we've seen growth in, where things have maybe changed from the way we predicted, some areas where they stayed the same, provide that to you as well. Looking at an April twenty twenty-two timeframe for that. The city council has made an RFP or a comp plan update a number one priority for their, their action for twenty twenty-two. So that comp plan was, is well teed up by getting the zoning ordinance cleaned up, getting that current comp plan review done, and then issuing an RFP for a comp plan update, May, April or May. We need to go through some budget process here at the city, so that we don't want to put it out too early until we know exactly how much money we're going to have to support it. Award that contract hopefully in the fall of twenty twenty-two. Work on our comp plan twelve to eighteen month process. Usually after a comp plan, then you have a, another zoning ordinance, another update to reflect changes that you may have made in your comp plan. And now you're looking at twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. I just wanted to walk you through all those timelines, because they're important to city council, they're important to staff, and you've heard a lot about them, and I feel like I haven't quite delivered some of these things to you yet, but they do take time. And I think we'll start bringing you things here in February, March, relative to a new ordinance anyways, or an updated ordinance. I'd be happy to talk through that timeline or explain some of this for you in more detail.
Does anyone have any questions?
Mark, this is Ann Kapler.
Yeah.
Obviously, we're going to be talking about this more in the future, but just, I guess, as a trailer, you're talking about minor changes to the multifamily density limits.
Yes.
Is that just language clarification, are you looking at compressing or expanding the density limits?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a, that's a great, that's a great, great question, and I'll give you probably more of a general answer than you want. Right now, at the R three, and this is a little bit inside baseball, if you will, at the R three zoning district, we widen out, we add a lot of uses at that district, so you go R one, that's single-family homes, large lot. You go R two, that's single-family homes, medium to small lot, and then R three, boom, you're into townhouses, you're, you're not into full multifamily, but you're into a lot, a lot more uses, and so we think as staff, we can meet some of the immediate needs that council and planning and zoning commissioners as well have talked about by dialing back in that R three district just a little bit, but not a wholesale change. We're talking, I'm sorry to use analogies too much, but we're talking, you know, you know, one or two percent change as opposed to a fifty percent change, again, analogies. So that's what we want to do in the short term, and then we want to get through this planning process and see, one, maybe how did that play out over, over a year, but also what does our planning process tell us about, about how we really want to? But also what do, what does our planning process tell us about, about how we really want to change our overall zoning ordinance? So we want to make some minor changes, address some of your concerns, but not go too far down the path until we can do a little more analysis.
I like that plan. That sounds like a, a good strategy. And I think we're all interested to talk about it in, in the future, to get into the into the classifications.
Absolutely. And we'll have, of course, working sessions and be involving you as well. So you're not going to see this all cold.
Yeah, this is Roy. I would agree with what Ann said, and I'm, I'm glad we're taking a look at it corporately from the city's perspective, P and Z perspective. Because there's been a number of cases that we've all had heartburn over and struggled with. And I think some clarification and adjustment would help prevent some of those issues in future cases. So I'm glad to see it as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Then I do have just one more slide to share with the commission. Denied, it was whispered. I think people are ready to get out of here. One more slide, just a work plan for 2022. Many of the things we just talked about are on this work plan, but this is, you know, this is what we're using for major projects, major planning division projects to get accomplished throughout the year. There's a couple of things I want to highlight that we haven't talked about. A new website has been put out. It's a really nice tool. It, it actually helps us do our daily work because we use the website quite a lot. It's going to include some online GIS capabilities. It already does. So if you haven't checked that out, please do. And the, the website you may have been going to or the route you may have been taking to find things might be different. If you have any problems, give me a call or anybody on staff will help you. And then also just continuing with the FEMA flood buyout program that some of you have heard about. We are doing a buyout along Duck Creek to, to continue that, that goal that council has to provide some relief to those homeowners and get the, and get those houses that are frequently flooded out of harms way. The rest of the items, I think I've talked about, we're really proud of the website, really proud of the online GIS. And we have a lot of work coming with both the ordinance update and the comprehensive plan evaluation and comprehensive plan update.
Great. Thank you. Any further comments before we end the meeting?
This is Ann Gannaway. I was just going to say that I really appreciate the planful and proactive approach that's happening here.
Thank you so much.
Great. All right. With that, meeting adjourned.